Sorry, I'm a little late. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's the same time we started meeting last night?
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, well, slide through the consent agenda. Everybody get to read all of the different comments and stuff? Um, claims?
Hi.
Okay. You doing good?
Yeah, they're good.
Okay. Alright. I don't know if some of them are much too big. You know, two or three more.
Uh, we did have some more, but some of the ones on this one are ones coming in too. It's like fifty-fifty for going out, coming in on this agenda. Uh, I do want to make one thing aware to the board on the student attendance agreements too. On this agenda, as well as on a previous one, we had a student that said EL, which is Early Literacy Program, so it's like a pre-K. Smith Valley doesn't offer an early literacy program, so even though we are approving that student to attend our district, in these cases, they were attending Cal's public schools, there won't be any tuition owed by Smith Valley for those students since we don't offer that program at Smith Valley.
Right.
Just so the board knows.
And I did have a discussion with one of our legislators, and they're hopefully gonna fix the... You gotta choose either...
The paperwork process?
Well, no, you either gotta choose A and B or charge tuition, not both.
Stop double-dipping.
Double-dipping is bad, and it's causing us no problem.
It's causing problems all over the state, for sure.
So, he said they were hoping to work on that next week. Alright, so, uh... I guess I do kinda need, I guess we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
May I get sat here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, public comments. This is, of course, the time for anybody out there, take any comments they have, um, that aren't on the agenda already. Just remember, we can't talk about personnel and personal stuff. No legal matters, no, nothing like that. Does anybody have anything to say? Thank you. Oh, and I wanted to remind everybody, we are being recorded. Okay. Administrator's report.
Alright, so today we had Community Work Day. It was our first one that we've had since I've been here. Uh, and we had, including the staff that helped out today, we had fourteen people in attendance, which was really nice. We had, um, uh, three families, including five students that came, and the rest were adults and staff. So it was just really great to have everybody. It was a perfect day for painting, which is what we primarily did.
You can tell.
I wear my paint with pride. School colors. Um, it was just great. And then we had hot dogs and ice cream for people that helped out. So Mr. Heidecker was there with his family, and, uh, everybody just had a great time. I was able to get input from the kids, what they thought we should do, so I took their advice, and so it was fun. It was just great, great to involve everybody. So we did that today, and, uh, Mrs. Candidate was there helping, and she did weed eating. She was the only person working on the school grounds at that time. Everybody else was working on the painting. So more power to her, because it was hot out. Um, coming up, I just have a bunch of events to talk about, because we've not had any kids at school for a couple of weeks now. Summer school's over. Um, we have back-to-school teacher meeting, August 26th at 2:30 with the barbecue at 2:45. The mentorship and induction day for new staff will be Friday, the 22nd, from nine o'clock to 12:30 PM. And everybody, all the staff are back to school for PIR days, and that will be August 25th and 26th. And on the 25th, we're gonna get to have, uh, a guest speaker. So an SRO, Paula Sullivan, is gonna come, and she's gonna do a safety presentation and answer questions, uh, that the staff have about different routines and things, concerns that they have expressed in the past. Well, what if this happens, or what if that happens, and how do we do this? And so to have that person come, that expert, come and do the presentation will be great. So we go over the Emergency Handbook every single year, but they just would like more information, so we are lucky to have her just come. Kindergarten and First Grade Experience Days are next week, and this, as you all know, is the first year that we are trying the First Grade Experience Days to hopefully ease that transition for children as they come to school and, uh, help them to feel excited about school. Then September 16th, our certified staff, for the second year, we are attending the tribal PIR in Pablo, and that costs us nothing except for transportation, which is fantastic, and they get a lot out of it. Uh, and so that's for Indian Education for All, so that really helps us out to, to just have an understanding of what's going on with our neighbors in Montana. And on October 6th, a gentleman named Dennis McLaughlin, and people know him as Denny, is gonna come to our school and do an all-staff training. So the training he's doing is called Excellence in Teaching, High Trust Teaching Workshop. So that will be for all of our parent professionals and for all of our certified staff, and for anybody else that wants to come to involve, uh, with the school. And then in the evening, he's gonna do a middle school student-parent evening presentation for ninety minutes, and it's called Be a Gifted Parent. And it helps parents know how to handle their middle-school-aged children when the middle-school-aged children don't respond when they hear something the first time. Uh, so just, uh, just different things like that. So it's gonna be how to become a gifted parent in ninety minutes, and kids and parents are going to be there. So we will get that out to the community, make that be well-known, advertise the heck out of it, so we have a nice attendance rate. So, uh, usually he charges $10,000 to attend a school district, and we were lucky to get him for $1,500. So I had a conversation with him on the phone one day, and we spoke for about thirty-five minutes, and we made a connection. I said, "Well, how much would it cost?" And at the beginning, he wouldn't tell me about the time we got finished. He said, "Well, the least I could do it for would be $1,500 plus the cost of an Econ Fair from Santa Barbara." So I said, "You know, I think that we can do that." So, uh, we two will do car rental, and he believes that he can stay in Big Fork with friends' pay. So I'm excited that he's coming. He evidently was here years ago and, uh, did a phenomenal job. Um, he just did a presentation, the same presentation actually, in Big Fork, and he sent me the reviews that people filled out. It was a stack of papers, two inches thick, and they were all so positive. So I'm very excited that he's coming, and it just helps us to solidify as a staff and be on the same page and, and have somebody that's been doing this for a long time come in, not just people that we work with all the time, or not just a local person, but to have somebody that has, uh, gone to so many different schools and has so much experience working with kids to be able to do this presentation. So I'm very excited for that.
And he is one. Can't wait to have every chance you got.
Yep.
What day is he coming?
Um, October 6th. It's a Staff Work Day.
Thank you.
And that's the one that you guys will be at.
Okay.
I made sure that you were coming.
Just make sure I don't take the day off.
Uh, okay, okay. So that's what I have for events, and then I have a little bit of new information for us. Um, so MTSVA just sent an announcement that there is a change, uh, the court's ordered a change in FAP, which is Reappropriate Public Education for Special Education Services. Previously, we had to serve students through the age of nineteen, and now we have to serve students through the age of twenty-two. So for the high schools, that means if somebody graduated last year, and they were just graduating based on the requirements of an IEP, that doesn't qualify as a graduation. They actually have to get the hours in to be able to get that diploma. So it still, of course, would be, um, modified and fit the IEP requirements, but if they, anybody that they stepped through last year just because they had an IEP, if they didn't have the hours, they'd have that opportunity to go back to school. And they could do that until they're twenty-two years old. So, uh, previously, uh, the schools received A and B funding for that through the age of nineteen, and we don't know right now. And the legislature doesn't know that they will give that through the age of twenty-two. So, anyway, just something to be aware of. That's a statewide thing that has just come across, so I just received that announcement. Then I learned this a week ago, that our accreditation review has been moved to fiscal year 28 instead of fiscal year 27. So we have two more years, so they moved everything. I thought, wow, it's just a crazy world out there. So they moved everything one more year, so we have still two more years to keep gathering our documentation before we're reviewed again instead of one more year. So as you know, we passed accreditation last year, and then we were gonna be reviewed again next year. But, well, now it's gonna be two years. And then we'll be on a three-year cycle. So, so that's what's going on. And then finally, there are these really pretty little red flags on sticks on our, on our property. Um, they were put there by the roundabout people, and I don't exactly know if that's going to be like a right-of-way, uh, distance, or if that's gonna be the distance that they think they're gonna be cutting up. If it is, it goes right through the addition on the gymnasium, so that's not gonna work. Um, so I'm gonna contact those people and see what those flags really mean, because it just happened this week that they put them there. I'm gonna contact them. And I also have Trish working on contacting a Realtor to get us an appraisal for the property, depending on what they're gonna be tearing up. Okay. So that's my report.
It just became worth a million dollars for that quarter.
Yeah. And nothing on Kelly Ray's side. Interesting.
Wayne has a lot of pull.
I don't know.
They can't drive stakes in the concrete over there.
Oh, we're doing concrete next week.
Sounds like those little poles of flies are removable, huh? Jacob.
I did look at them today. Some of them say existing right-of-way, which is actually on the property or like several feet inside the fence. And then some of them say proposed right-of-way. So they're gonna have to make some adjustments on that proposal, obviously, because they can't go through buildings, so...
Not without building us a new building.
Yeah.
They could do that if they want to. I'm okay with that.
How far do they go over?
A couple of feet.
Couple of feet?
Yeah.
Into the building, a couple of feet.
Oh, into the building? The 300 building?
So about the...
No, we're not that lucky.
Oh, hold on, I gotta...
You've got that 300 building alone.
So as the existing ones, we have to honor those, right? If they're existing right-of-way? Okay. And how far are those in?
They're in the fence line.
Yeah, the fence is the, on the other side of the building right now.
The really interesting thing is if you look at this property map, there's an easement that goes right through the middle of this building. So that's interesting. They built this building right on top of the easement. Yeah.
Okay.
Life is interesting, it's fun. With all these different things that come up, it keeps you happy.
Okay. What do you think?
Of course.
Thank you. I was hopeful, because I stopped typing a little bit.
Easy having to cut a roof feels like, and you have to have to, to talk about these things.
Hi, Jessica.
Thank you.
We're gonna go be so chill when I get home.
Okay. Alright, so I'm actually kind of excited about my report. Not that any of you guys remember this from a year ago, but in, at the August board meeting, I never have revenue and expenditure budget reports attached to them, because I don't have the expenditure budget or the revenue budget entered into Black Mountain yet since I just finished the budget. In fact, it's on this agenda for Google. But I actually got them all entered into Black Mountain in time before this board meeting and was able to run the reports. So nobody else might have been that exciting, but I do, because it means I'm ahead of schedule for the first time in four years, so I was pretty excited about it. Um, so they're all attached to the reports, to the agenda. So anyway, that's my exciting news. Um, yeah, that's what I've got for you guys. Unless anybody has any questions. Business as usual in my area, and obviously I'll talk more later when we get down to the budget and such.
Okay, no questions.
Joe, you wanna talk about your, your reports?
Um, I have nothing to update for facilities at this time. Um, we have not had a meeting. I don't know if Jay has anything to update on quotes or things, but...
So I've called many of the people to come out and look at doing the siding on this building. First guy to come out was seventy-five thousand. Since you can't do, well, you can't, but it wouldn't look right. The four-foot up, that's for the whole building.
He said, well, he said it wouldn't hold.
Right.
What he anticipates is that, um, all of the... What's it made on?
It's got to do by before.
So, so the, but the surface, all of that stuff, he said would crack and we'd have to replace all of it.
Oh, the, the existing side.
The third floor.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why, so he recommended doing the entire building. So that would be for the entire building if you did it with the metal.
Next guy I called, nineteen thousand. Wouldn't get back to me. I think he made a mistake. So I finally got ahold of him. He said, "I can't do it right now." So I've got another guy that came out and looked at it. He hasn't sent me anything yet. The roof on the gym. The guys, first guys that had to come out said we could overlay it with rubber. Needs something of that sort.
Like put a rubber membrane?
A membrane, right. Six fifty a square foot, they figured, to do that.
That's like a four-thousand square foot building?
Yes.
There it is. The next, the next guy to come out for the roof said it's on wrong.
On wrong?
Ninety-two thousand for that one. Yeah, he, it's supposed to be screwed in the valleys, he said, and it's screwed up on top where they overlap.
That's where they always screwed them.
There, there's differing opinions on how to screw downstairs.
Right, but this was back a long time ago. That's the way they did it.
At the beginning of time.
And there's a bunch of holes up there. He took pictures of, they've always put silicone in them. You can see there's silicone that is wearing out or going away. What else did I call about?
You were talking about screws.
Oh, I was sizing them? They're the biggest screws they can put in there, according to these guys. That's the biggest ones they make. Both the, two of the guys that came out said that. Them are the biggest screws they make. Well...
Do we have leaks now?
Huh?
No.
Is it leaking now?
No, it is not.
And the last leak that we had, it turned out to be a little piece of flashing at the end, and it was a hundred-and-forty-five-dollar repair. So...
Yeah, we've, it's been...
So it can, it can, it can probably hold off for a while.
Been good so far.
I'm just wondering on that, I mean, I've seen some pretty nice-looking four-foot. Wayne's got sightings.
Yep. So this, this last guy, I told him we wanted a price on both. Four-foot up, right underneath the windows and the whole thing.
I think that'd look cool.
He's supposed to give me a price, but I don't know if he knows how people are flakes.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. But, um...
Have you ever seen how easy it is to get a contractor's license in the state of Montana?
Other than that, I'm trying to get our plow guy to come out and get all the gravel that he pushed up on the grass back where it belongs.
Mr. Plow?
Mr. Plow?
Mr. Plow.
You're talking about flakes.
Yeah.
He also drives for DoorDash.
Yeah. Anyway, he's coming right out. He pulled in today, and I promise I'm coming out. Perfect, please do.
That's quite... So, so we're gonna get a few more quotes on snow plowing this year, too?
Well, he does a good job snow plowing, but he doesn't do a good job on anything else.
Yeah, so I, I, my recommendation, based on our experience with him last year, is he did do a good job last year with the snow plowing.
With the plowing, yeah.
About the plowing, and he was...
Nothing else.
Except when he didn't wanna do it.
He was there.
He plowed.
He was there.
Um, I don't see any snow that's snow plowing.
Every time it snows, it's a hundred, through this guy, it's a hundred-and-thirty-five dollars to plow.
We had an extremely low plow year last year.
Everybody else was four hundred every time.
Dirt cheap last year.
That I've called, works four hundred every time you plow. One guy said, depending on how much snow...
Yeah.
Uh, it would be more. If you, if you had lots of snow, it was more. So, yeah.
Texas is the same number of times. Okay.
But I don't, Mr. Plow's, I mean, like I said, he does a good job, but I'm plowing, nothing else. He'll do a good job.
And then what about the heating units and heating and AC units that they came and cleaned? They were painting?
Yeah, we, they, they come out today, yesterday and today and clean all the AC units or HVAC units. They found, do you notice? They found one in the 300 building that's no good. They need to put a nine-hundred-dollar part in.
In the 300 building?
For the heater.
There was, there's only one that's working now. He shut the other one off. It's nine-hundred dollars just for the part. Now, that's not labor. I told him, I'll send you a price and...
Second opinion.
Yep, right.
Does the other heater in that building not work either?
It does work. The other one does.
Do we need to?
I don't know for what.
For what we're doing, we're just keeping it warm enough.
With no insulation in there, probably not enough.
No.
But if the, why did he shut the one off, though?
Because he told me there was something out of it, and I can't remember what. That's why I told him since we were all painting.
Oh, those gas, those are gases?
Yeah, they are gases, yeah.
I'll have my brother stop and talk to you.
Okay.
He works for another entity, but he's there, he can't, he's there. Perfect.
Okay, perfect. I don't think we need to have it very warm in there, but...
Just enough heat for reasons, right?
We spent eleven-hundred dollars on plowing last year, to answer your question. It was our lowest plow year in a while. I also think we didn't get billed for some plowing last year.
Not, not that you didn't remind.
I don't go after invoices.
We don't. Ignore you. They don't remember, it's not our fault.
First thing I tell anybody who comes out every year is, make sure that you plow, because you'll be watching on camera. If you didn't plow...
Don't invoice me.
Don't give us no bill.
And then what about the heater, not heater, the air conditioning unit in Melissa's room?
They put a new motor in Melissa's, Ford's new motor.
And it's working?
Yes, it's working now.
Right, Melissa must use her air conditioning.
They sent them, they set the wrong motor three times.
Oh.
Wrong one, three times.
Okay. The first one they put in, I don't know if it's wrong, but it burned it up right-of-way.
Well, it doesn't cost us.
No, it shouldn't, no, no. Okay. Supposedly they have the right one. Let's see. It's working.
I just know these units have lasted a long time, as long as we take care of them.
Yeah. You're getting harder and harder to get parts for yourself. Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
Thank you, Jay.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Joe.
Alright, let's get into our action agenda.
Do you really wanna go first?
Yeah, let's get this over with, shall we?
Okay. After all of our discussions and, and all of the adjustments to contracts and wage scales, I told Lacy to come up with a, a new proposal for wages. And, uh, so everybody has, uh, and, uh... I think it's more than fair. I think, you know, it's... She's only asked for a quarter a year for the last two years, so...
Well, so I wanted to talk about that because of that fact. So, it, it, it's a good jump this year, but are we necessarily making it up to the last three? Because like you said, she, she asked for a quarter. That's what, one-ish percent? I guess, don't make me do the math.
I guess...
That, that's the only reason that I wanna discuss.
And, and the only thing I'm, I'm trusting that Lacy looked at the budget and said this is more than fair.
Well, I thought...
And, and I guess comparable.
So...
Comparable to other schools.
Well, Lacy said to me, because we're, we're from a college. Um, or at least the way that I understood these numbers is this won't really cost us anything because of the Star Act. Fact. So this isn't, this isn't costing the school any more money. This is just a free. And I don't, I mean, it's awesome, but I don't think that this makes up for those issues. I mean, because of inflation, she did take a hit the last couple of years, too. But I don't know, because I remember it was twenty-five cents, what, last time?
Last time I know, it was twenty-five cents.
When we approved fifty-five cents an hour earlier this year.
Yeah, but that was with the knowledge that this would be happening.
I don't know, I'd have to look.
I guess my question is, is this is what, are you comfortable with this? Or are you, you know, I mean, we all like to get paid more than...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, um...
The, the Stars Act, as far as we know, will keep going, but it is a three-year...
Where we are currently, in the current expenditure budget that I've entered into the system with Mrs. Matt and I going through it line by line by line by line, that we have room for this proposal. If we go up to that, that Stars component is seventy-five sixty-six, right? So I'm asking for essentially less than half of that Stars piece. If we go up to that, you have to cut a different budget line item. That's the reality of it. It does, it doesn't currently exist. So you'd have to find thirty-seven hundred dollars in the current expenditure budget.
What's your current budget?
It's the thirty-three that you guys approved. Last year it was thirty-two fifty. And the year before that, I just pulled it up, just because you guys just asked me. The year before that, it was thirty-two twenty-five.
Last year it was thirty-two twenty-five?
It was thirty-two twenty-five in fiscal year 24. Then it went to thirty-two fifty in fiscal year 25.
Okay.
Then you guys approved thirty-three for this coming school year.
So we're actually looking at a bucket?
It was thirty-two fifty last year.
Dollar thirty-five.
Talk about from...
From last year to this year?
From what it was.
Yeah.
From what it was last year. It's a dollar thirty-five. That's pretty good. I would get one like that for a month.
Yeah, it is a good raise. I'm definitely...
And I'm understanding what you're saying, Corbin, but, but at the same time, we can't go through and have to...
Yeah.
Find places to, you know? That's why I say, this is, this is what, and that was my thing, was it had to be something that was comfortable for the budget at the same time. What do you think, Jason?
I totally agree with all the comments. I think it's a tough situation, as always. We, like to your point, Bob, we all wanna get paid more. Um, I think Lacy's done a fantastic job. Continues to be a tremendous resource for this school district, and probably is as close to replaceable as most of our teaching staff. And, uh, you know, I would, uh, I, I would think we can always make another adjustment, Cody, to your point, after this next fiscal year, ensure things land and continue from there, so... That's my two cents.
Okay.
But...
That's just, you know, that was my thing, was, you know, we have to be comfortable. That's just, you know, that was my thing was, you know, we have to be comfortable.
No, I, I.
We have to, we have to be prepared for those expenses that may come up. I really don't, at this point in time, as much as I would love to give Lacy, I mean, thirty-five dollars an hour, it still doesn't seem like enough for us, you guys, but. We can't, I don't want to have to go back through the budget and say, well, what do we need? What else do we need?
My position is a little bit of a tough spot for asking for wage increases because I have all of the insider information.
No, I know.
In good conscience, as, like, it's really tough because other positions can come and ask for the moon because they don't necessarily know the details of the, the budget pieces. I cannot in good conscience and conscience ask you guys for more than what I put on this paper today. If you guys choose to do something different, then we as a school have to figure something else out to make that happen, um, which obviously is doable, and I appreciate that. But that's just, that's the unfortunate spot that I land myself in in this position is I, I can't ask for that. I have a conscience, sorry.
And that's because I know you're not asking for more, is why. I mean, you, I know that this puts this spot, this is very comparable to any provision in other schools, but I don't want it really easy for you to jump to, and I know you're not planning anything, I know none of that, but I, I like keeping that position competitive.
If she, if she leaves, I'll hunt her down.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm, I'm uncomfortable with these numbers.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve L. Bradford's fiscal year twenty-six amended contract.
I'll second.
Moved in second, is there any other discussion?
There was one comment on that contract, is the effective date, not the effective date, but there was a date at the bottom that needs to be updated.
Oh, that it has to be signed by your.
The acceptance, yeah.
Okay. I'll just cross it out and initial it if that works for you guys.
For me?
Cool.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Cody, second that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Or no.
I did.
You seconded.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So, next we go to our new teacher.
I'll make a motion to hire Kay Greiner, one FTE elementary teacher.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So do you want to introduce yourself?
Uh, yeah, I'm Kelly Greiner. Um, my husband just retired from the military, so I'm moving back home. I'm excited, fifth grade.
Are you in relation to the Greiners that used to live in this district? No?
Maybe, I don't know, but my husband's from Minnesota.
What branch was it?
Air Force.
Could we pre-vote?
Hey. Hey. We're smart enough so that we don't have to go.
She's also bringing a student with her.
Yeah, she is bringing a student.
Cool, perfect.
Okay, I need a approval for the contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as written.
I'll second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? You have a contract.
Yay.
Can't go anywhere.
You can sign it at the end of tonight to approve it.
And I gave the information from Trish and I.
I haven't.
Missing that. They're logging.
I'll, I'll make a motion to hire.
Jerelyn.
Jerelyn Sandner.
Sandner, 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 Sandner. As, uh, one FTE library slash tunnel teacher.
So Jerelyn said to let you know, I'm sorry I interrupted you, second, thank you, and to let you know that she apologizes for not being able to be here this evening, she is actually closing out things with her last job, so this is her evening to get that done, so she's at that district taking care of all that stuff.
Where's she, where's she teaching?
So she is with, oh, no.
She's with the homeschool.
She's with the homeschool that starts with a C, I can't remember the official name of it, but it's a homeschool organization of about a hundred and seventy kids.
Okay, moved in seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I need a contract too.
I'll make a motion to approve Jay Sandner's FY twenty-six teacher contract.
I'll second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Judy wants to move on now.
She's just gaining more hours.
Just gaining fifteen more minutes.
So Judy is, uh, I, I asked Judy, because she has seniority within the classified staff, if she would consider working fifteen more minutes a day to cover the end of the day from three-thirty to three-forty-five, because while I could do it, I cannot do it all the time. There's just no way to do, because there are days that I'm not here, there are days that I have things going on with kids or parents, and I just cannot do it all the time, so I asked Judy if she would consider, and she said yes.
This is directly because the school day is now longer?
Yes. And I just want to make sure that we have enough coverage, I don't want any children getting run over by cars.
Or vans pull up and try to steal them like we have in the past.
Yeah.
You can pack if you want.
Huh?
You can pack if you want.
Oh, I was tackling. I took that safety course where we went and did all that stuff.
If we approve this, you have to though.
Have to tackle?
Oh, wait a minute, I want to stay till three-forty-five.
I'll just stay here just like watch.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Jay Brindland's FY twenty-six amended contract.
I'll second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So we are going to hire, can we just do this in one? Just take something.
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion. Uh, I moved to hire SPECT for fifth, sixth, and seventh, eighth volleyball coach, fiscal year twenty-six.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, and.
So I, I just want to add before we move on from that, I did have a conversation with her, uh, because it is a double load for, for her, um, and she's comfortable that she can do it, and her schedule is going to work so that she will be able to do it, so. And then regarding supervision, the way it's been done in the past, if somebody did both teams in the past, is they made sure that they had parents sign up to be there to supervise, so we'll make sure that supervision happens.
Could we do the same thing for the contract?
Do it.
I'll make a motion to hire SPECT, or to approve the coaching contract for SPECT for fiscal year twenty-six for fifth, sixth, and seventh and eighth grade.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Do you got a good list of substitutes?
It's attached.
Yes, I did. Okay, I didn't look at it, but.
Did you push on your piece of fur?
I believe I have to abstain from this vote. My wife's on the list. But since Jason's here, we'll fly.
I'll make a motion to hire twenty-five, twenty-six substitutes.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, all in favor of hiring the substitutes for twenty-five, twenty-six?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Okay. Some of this stuff we have to do later.
Yep.
Okay, multi-district agreement.
Take a motion to approve the multi-district agreement for twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-eight.
Can you say, can you add and open fund one eighty-two?
And, and open fund one eighty-two.
I'll explain in a minute.
I'll second that.
Okay, do you want to explain before we vote?
Sure. You might as well know what you're voting on. Yes, you do, you do.
You might have to hire somebody to take care of all this.
Um, we have the multi-district agreement with, uh, like Kyla, West Valley, uh, Oldie Bizzle, and it's how we can have our fund one eighty-two, where we have our funds that we can move money into when we have funds left at the end of the year, so we have strategically, strategically using words here, so I don't say the words I'm not supposed to use. Anyway, so this last legislative session, they passed a new law where each individual school district in a multi-district agreement can actually open their own fund one eighty-two and house their own funds in their, in their own fund, house your own money in your own fund that we have control over. So how it currently exists is West Valley is who houses all the funds, so at the end of the year, like in June this year, we wrote that check to West Valley, and then we mail it to West Valley, they deposit it into fund one eighty-two, and then they keep track of everybody's individual money, right? That's how the funds work in a multi-district slash inter-local fund, but now we actually can house it in our own fund. The benefits to that, or you get more freedom with how to use that fund, because right now, you can't use it for payroll, for example, which we don't currently, but that's one of the big benefits, is right now we can't run payroll through a fund, a multi-district agreement, because we can't have West Valley running our payroll for us, so we can only send them an invoice, so let's say we want them to pay for the, the siding out of our multi-district fund, and then we send them the invoice, they cut the check out of our fund, and then they pay it, well, now we're going to house our own funds. So that's made possible by this last legislative session. In order to do that, we have to pass a new agreement, because we are in this multi-district agreement, so you have to pass the agreement, and then you have to make the motion to open the fund so that I can go to the county treasurer and say, hey, we, we need this fund, not my board approved it. How's that?
Perfect.
Good.
So then we get the funds we have in there now in our own?
Yeah, it's kind of an odd law, in my opinion, because now it's like, the funds are the same, right? Everybody's money's the same, and now we house it ourselves, but now the part that I find odd is we're in this multi-district agreement with these other districts, and we will now know, we won't know what they have in their funds, we will have no connection really to each other, we'll have our own funds. So it's, it's kind of an odd law, it's, I'm, I'm avoiding using the word that we want to call these, these monies, because you're not supposed to call them that, but it's basically a way to be able to have funds that you can use on whatever, um, so it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting legislative piece, if that makes sense. Are you following me?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so if we have funds left at the end of the year.
I just didn't know we were leaving what we had in that one, and then starting our own with new funds for like at the end of this year, I didn't know we were leaving some over there.
You'd know, we won't leave any over there, it'll pull, West Valley will write us a check, she's waiting for me to actually send this signed agreement to her, and then she'll write out the checks to all the individual districts who pass these new agreements, and all the funds will be distributed into each individual district's fund one eighty-two. So, yeah, I see everybody doing the eyebrow thing, because it doesn't make a lot of sense, does it? No, we have a multi-district agreement. We have a multi-district agreement, but we each have our own fund now, but this multi-district agreement, you do have to have it, because it's the only way that you're allowed by law to have the fund.
Oh, that's stupid. That's the tricky part.
That's the tricky part.
They, they passed new legislation, but didn't change the old process.
Yeah, it's, it's a little odd, yeah, how you have to have a multi-district agreement, and then the other things, you know, there's other things that go with it, as in, we could all pool together our fund one eighty-two and purchase something as a multi-district if we wanted to, if there was something that we wanted to go in together on, you have the ability to do that, but there's really nothing in law that says you can't do that without a multi-district agreement, because we could split a purchase with Kyla and write up an, an agreement on that purchase, so, it's, anyway. There you go.
The only small advantage I can see is if you've got three districts worth of money, and you're getting interest anywhere, and you're going to make a lot more interest than if you did it on your own.
Well, and that made sense with the fund one eighty-two housed at West Valley, because that's exactly what it was, is we would get a pretty decent chunk of interest, right? Now, we don't, hi, guys, now we don't have that, because now we're only going to receive the interest off of our funds, which is a little odd. I would agree with that.
That's, to me, the, the, you know, part of the purpose is to get a bigger.
To get a bigger interest chunk, I, yep, I agree, but, um, having the agreement is definitely beneficial to us, because if we have money left over at the end of the year, you can put it in that fund, and then it has no limits on what you can spend it on. You know, other funds have very finite purposes that you can use them for, and your inter-local fund has no, no limitations, so. Yeah. Okay, we have a motion in second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, uh, all in, is there any other discussion, anybody want? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Who's on the policy committee?
Jason and Cody. And Donovan, but they can talk.
Okay, um, so are these policy changes, or? This will be first reading?
Uh, no, um, well, that's a good point, it'll be first reading on the adoption ones, not the amendments, though. I probably should have put them as two different ones, that's okay, it doesn't really matter, because some are amendments and some are adoptions. So the ones that are being adopted. Yeah, it's got to be first reading on those, but the ones being amended, uh, they can just go through.
So do we need to break these out?
It would be better. I mean, it's, it's all together here, but, but really, um, and I'm not going to sit here and try and read each one of them, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the policy adoptions.
And we'll just say, I'll say first reading.
First reading. So we'll have to do this again?
I'll make sure they're on here.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion on any of the policy adoptions? Seeing none, we go. I mean, is there any highlights this today?
No, we had a couple that we're still kind of working on. We weren't quite sure, so, but no, everything, everything else is good to go.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, first reading has been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, and then I will take a motion to accept all amendments.
I'll make a motion to accept all amendments to our policies.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on those amendments, any highlights, anything we should, none of them, don't have. Okay, um, seeing no discussion, all in favor of, uh, the amendments? Seeing if I can change any.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Easy, hopefully we are really kicking back policy committee.
Well, I'm not going to sit here and read them all, so. Fiscal year twenty-five trustee's financial summary.
Hopefully you guys at least perused this report a little bit, because it's yours. Basically, your trustee's financial summary is your summary of everything financial for the entire fiscal year, so it's, oh, the battery's running out, please. Hold on.
I'm still here.
But you're not going to be my longer.
You're not going to be for very long. There we go.
It is now.
Okay, I'm going to take a motion on the financial summary first. And then if there's any discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve FY twenty-five trustee's financial summary. Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion, any questions for Lacy? Okay, if there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Okay, fiscal year twenty-six budget, revenue budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
I'll second.
Are there any questions on the budget? Pretty much.
It's pretty cut and dry.
Pretty cut and dry. We get what we get.
And we can throw big bets.
Can, can do anything good. Like I said, the biggest thing that I, I know, I talked to, I talked to Tanner Smith, and, and he has every intention of at least trying to give him to move on the, what costs us the most, I think, is all of that A and B that we're losing and still having to fake. It just doesn't make sense, it's not fair.
All going, should it double negative big?
So, okay, all in favor of the fiscal year twenty-six budget?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Okay, proportion of ending cash balances.
I'll make a motion to approve FY twenty-five portion of ending cash balances.
Second.
This is a required report that goes to the county and in the paper, and it's really, it's just a summary off of the TFS and the budget combined.
So it's one of those things we have to do.
I like the simplified version.
Yeah, this is literally the num, yeah, you already approved the other two documents, which is where these numbers come from, so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Fiscal year twenty-six handbooks.
There's three items in that folder, if it'll loop.
Correct.
I had to comment on one, on the emergency handbook, it has Angela Moore listed in there as a designateee, or a poss, possible designateee. Everywhere else in the document, it says council.
Oh, good catch.
So I have to say, I am very. So I have to say, I am very impressed by this gentleman because when I sent out the handbooks, like within a couple hours later, he says, I found this and this and this. Within a couple hours, I'm going, okay.
So maybe he should just be your proof.
On the handbook committee.
Thanks. Good job.
Very excellent job. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I had three teachers looking at it, three teachers, maybe, maybe even four teachers. I think I have four teachers looking at it, plus myself. And then you come along in two hours and go, oh, I also have all this.
I'll make a motion to accept FY26 handbooks.
I'll second.
Okay, yeah. Um, okay, moved in second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, propane contract.
I'll make a motion to approve FY26 CHS propane contract.
Second.
Um, our, our contract for the last two years was a buck thirty-five. They came back to me this year and said they needed to raise this to a buck forty-nine. And I said, you're going to need to do better than that. So he said, well, what do you mean? Yeah, he said, well, I said, well, if you're going to come with that proposal, that's fine, but I have to get a second opinion because I can't take that to my board. They're going to want a second, they're going to want a second bid. And we went to bid, I went to bid for a couple years. The problem with the other company and why can't I think who it is, help me out.
City Service?
It's not.
City Service Valcon?
Yes, City Service Valcon, thank you.
Good job, Joe.
The, thank you. The problem with that company is they have a flexible rate, they won't give me a fixed rate. I've asked, they will not, so.
You've never checked it.
The problem. Mm-mm. The problem with, they've never reached out to us either. Uh, so that's the biggest problem with City Service Valcon is they won't give me a fixed rate. And so that's scary. That's a, that's a slippery slope to be on when you're talking about propane and going into winter. So when CHS brought me this proposal and they said buck forty-nine, I said, you're going to have to do better or I have to go to bid, he said, how about a buck forty? I said, I, I can in good conscience, take conscience, take that to my board and say, this is what I've got and I don't think we need to go to bid for this. They sat at buck thirty-five for two years and now they're only going up to a buck forty, so. I think you guys should go for it, but that's just my opinion. Plus, we don't use anywhere near the 10,000 gallons, just so you know. That's more than double that we'll be using.
I was just wondering how many times we fill throughout the winter.
I don't know, three to five, depending on the air.
We have at least three propane tanks here.
Yeah, and they fill all at the same time.
It depends how cold.
Maybe three times.
I can pull up what we spent on propane last year. Last year we budgeted sixteen-five, we spent ten-six. So.
It wasn't the cold one?
Yeah.
It all depends on that, how long that stretch lasts and if it happens to fall during sewer.
Yeah, during the weekend.
And these guys do a good job with us because even when I did go to bid with City Service, they came back with a higher rate than the buck thirty-five, even at their lowest end of their sliding. Yeah, so I, I think we should stay with CHS one for a year and then we can see when they come back to us next year and go from there.
Make a motion to approve FY26 CHS propane contract.
Joe did and you seconded it.
All in favor of the propane contract?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm used to arguing then we decide after.
You have to make motions. Legally, we're supposed to wait until after the motion.
I know, I knew it that way. And then I'll make a motion to approve the FY26 MSSA agreement.
Do you all want to know what MSSA means first?
Montana Small School.
So that's Joe. It's our political resource EM that we belong to and they provide resources for all of our staff. Uh, included in it this year, we are adding the library private. So they basically will mentor our librarian, which she is not librarian endorsed at this time. And so in order for them to do that, we have to pay the $300 for the K through six and then the other $300 for seven-eight, which is considered a separate school because it gets a middle school funding. Um, the other change this year is they will be doing our, uh, math testing because what happened was previously, um, NWEA was doing the math testing and they decided that they were going to charge every school in the entire state $1,650 for their math coordinator or whoever it is that does the testing to be trained every single year. So that's an additional $1,650 per school statewide that OPI would be getting for this training that they don't need. So, um, so the nice thing is that MSSA does it for free. And so I sent Crystal, she went ahead and did that training. And they, it's a requirement for OPI now for us to do it regularly, even though, uh, the majority of math, math coordinators are completely trained. Uh, but so it's an annual requirement now and we don't want to have to pay for that. So we're going to add them to this MSA, MSA, since it doesn't cost us extra for the training.
So the thirty-two, thirty-five, that's our total cost to them?
So.
And the invoice at the bottom? Page five.
Yeah, yeah, so, so please forgive all my scratch outs and my signatures.
I just, I just need a yes or no on thirty-two, thirty-five.
So, yes, so, so the thirty-two, thirty-five, yes.
Okay.
Dawn, didn't you say this is a renewing? On here, it says the new fee is $300 for a new school?
So the new school is for the math fee. So this is the first year they're doing our math fee. And then they're actually counting for the middle school, the math fee as a, as a renewal, I believe. So that's the one hundred. Oh, they, they marked it off, so.
You can read this one too?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So no, this is correct. I, I was wrong when I said that. So the new fee is the $300 and that's K through eight for math testing. That's correct.
We have a motion, but no second, just so you know.
I'm sorry, I tried to just tell me what it was.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
So the math fees were very, very much the same, but what wasn't the same was the extra $1,650, which is, is included in this contract.
All right.
So this wasn't our budget plan, though?
This is part of the.
Yes, it's a requirement actually, so, yes. We just look for the best way to pay for this and meet that requirement.
Okay, moved in second, any other discussion? If not, um, all, all in favor of the MSSA agreement?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Do you have any correspondence?
Yep.
Yes, sorry. So I just got this through an email, so it was forwarded to me from Ms. Hanson and it says summer school, thank you from her parents. So I would just like to share it with you. She says, hi there, I just wanted to thank you for such a great summer program. My daughter had a wonderful time and I can tell she learned so much. We truly, truly appreciate the time, energy, and heart that you and your team put into making it all happen. Also, the summer school home packets are incredibly generous, thank you. If there's any way that we can make a donation to support future programs, we'd be more than happy to do so. Wishing you a relaxing, well-deserved rest of your summer, or that was her language.
Cool.
The summer school program has really been a great benefit and I'm going to do everything I can to keep it here. So I was lucky to find funding this year and I'm going to go after the same source and I'm not telling the other superintendents where we got it from, so.
Good idea.
Awesome.
All right, any special discussion?
I'm not answering these questions anymore.
Okay.